Good evening and welcome to our May seventeenth Village Board of Trustees meeting. I would ask upfront that we have an exit behind you and we have one off to your right should you need it. I need to make a motion to open up the public hearing, actually the continuance of Local Law Six, Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter forty-three.
Carl will make the motion.
Barron, triple second.
Call the question.
Barron, your aye?
For our aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer aye, so carried. So first order of business is the introduction of Local Law Six of two thousand and twenty-two, Chapter forty-three, Vehicle and Traffic. This is a continuation of a public hearing. Does anyone have anything regarding, from the public, regarding the Vehicle and Traffic, Chapter forty-three? Did you say yes? In the back?
No.
Are you just waving?
Yes.
Okay, okay, all right.
If there's no one here to comment.
Yeah, yeah, just trustee Carl.
Yeah, just some clarification on forty-three twenty B.
What page is that on?
It's on this page.
I think it's on page four. Okay. On six, I think.
Yeah. In that Sundays and holidays, it says except Sundays and holidays, which is...
And which subsection, I'm sorry?
It's B.
B.
Twenty B?
Okay.
Twenty, forty-three...
Two-hour parking?
Yep. Now, it says except Saturdays and holidays.
Sundays and public holidays?
Right. Now, my question there is if it's a Sunday or it's a holiday and if somebody parks their car there all day long...
Then it's okay.
It's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Should we not at least, it's free parking, should we not at least have a time limit on that?
Well, usually, that's a parking meter, right?
Yes.
So generally, it will say when it's effective and, you know, except Saturday or Sunday. I don't know if your parking meters or your kiosks are going to say that, but that's generally what it says.
What about signage? Can we place signage in the same area?
Yes, you can certainly place signage.
Because, you know, my concern is, you know, you're trying to keep parking spaces open for, you know, patrons that want to go into the marketplace or into one of the other stores, get in their car and drive out, so the next, next party can drive in in their car and park. And if we got cars because it's legal to park there all day on a Sunday or a holiday and people drive through trying to go into a store and they don't see any parking, they may opt not to stop and just keep right on going. So if you want to try to at least keep these parking spots so that they're, you know, they're a little bit more fluid to draw people in.
Um, I actually think that that's in the existing law. I don't know if I appreciate that particular point.
I just think that, you know, the board...
We're having trouble here. I'm right up front, I got good here. Can you go up in your microphone?
Can you hear me okay?
No, this has got to be...
You're not hearing me?
Yeah, they should be on.
So we're saying it's parking from...
How about it now?
Eight to six for two hours, except for Sundays and holidays.
Okay.
I didn't hear a word.
You've got to put your mic up, Debbie. There you go. Try it now.
I said, so we're saying that parking is from eight to six with two-hour parking every day except Sundays and holidays.
Right.
But we're worried that Sundays could be...
Or holidays.
People might park all day.
Parking, they're there all day and then, you know, you're trying to get people into the downtown area and if there's no parking because the same cars are parked there all day, you know, I, I think it's something we need to look at.
I would just note that, again, this has been in the law. I didn't change that. So if there hasn't been a problem, I'm not sure that the board needs to do that, but we can certainly make a change if you wish to also regulate Sundays and holiday parking.
Well, couldn't we just establish or confirm the amount of hours you're allowed to park there before moving on and then maybe signage to support it?
Of course. If the board wants to say that it's two-hour parking on any day except Sundays and holidays when it's four-hour parking, I'm just not sure how that fits with the new software for the kiosks and I'm sure it can be accommodated if that's what the board wants to do.
Okay.
Is it something that we can see how it goes and if we need to amend it or do we set it in stone now? You can always amend a local law.
Yeah.
It just, it requires another process, another local law for the amendment. This local law I cleaned up quite a bit to make it easier, just in the formatting, but I did not touch that. I wasn't aware that that was an issue. But if it is, we can either address it now. You can go ahead and close the public hearing, but you can ask me to make a change like that. It's a fairly minor change, so it shouldn't be a problem. But you need to just let me know how you want that to read.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing on this Chapter forty-three, V and T, and add the exception that trustee Carl's referring to.
All right, so you need a mo, you need a second to close the public hearing.
So I need a second.
Barron, triple second.
Call the question.
Barron, your aye?
For our aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer aye, so carried.
And so what would the board like to do with this? Do you want to consider it and, and send me a recommendation or do you want to do it now?
We can do it now. Let's get it out, let's get it out of the way.
Get away.
I, I think what we want to do is we leave, the Sundays and holidays as free parking, but with a, with a, with a time limit. I think two hours is, is more than enough.
So then you, i- if you believe that two hours is enough, then just take out except Saturdays, Sundays and public holidays. Just don't put that in there.
Right, then they're going to be paying for it then.
That is correct. I mean, a lot of times these, these parking, these exceptions were to accommodate people who were, let's say, going to church on Sunday or just to kind of, because generally, a lot of businesses are closed on Sunday, so there's pretty much a lot of parking.
Things are changing down here in the, in the downtown area, especially with the, you know, with the Lake Street Marketplace. There's what, twelve, thirteen vendors in there?
Yes.
And if the vendors, if the vendors decide, well, it's free parking, I'm going to park out there, though they're hurting themselves, number one, but, you know, you want to try to keep parking spaces open so that there's a turnover. So you've got people coming, people going, people coming, people going.
Okay, so I think what we do is just leave it as it stands. I think we amend it. We can...
Do you want to strike that?
Yeah.
Okay.
There is just problems there.
I, I, I don't know if there's a prob, like, I don't know if there's a problem on Sunday, but maybe you have seen it?
I haven't, but...
I have it.
But I don't know.
Same vehicles.
Packing out there.
Because right now, there's no parking meters or anything there, so they just...
Right. I, I'm hoping that when the meters go in, maybe it will fix itself.
Okay, well, I think if it becomes an issue, we'll have to address it and amend the local law.
All right, so then I'm being instructed not to change it?
Right.
Is that the feeling of the board then?
Yeah.
Okay.
I, I, I think something needs to be done.
Was that, no, my said, is it good?
Then do you think it should be two-hour parking on Sundays where they pay or no, no paying with a limit?
Well, we've always had free parking on, on weekends and holiday, or on Saturdays, I'm sorry, Sundays and hol, and holidays.
So you're thinking free parking on Sundays and holidays up to four hours?
Well, I didn't say four hours.
Okay, two hours, okay.
Two hours.
Two hours. Because you want the turnover, the vehicles out of those parking spaces so other people come in. And if people just park there, it's going to turn people off from going into these shops because there's no parking.
Right.
That's all I'm saying.
Okay, let's call the question.
Barron, your aye?
For our aye.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. What question are you calling to change it or leave it alone?
What you got?
Oh, leave it, okay. So the motion is to leave it alone?
That's it.
Go now, all right.
Okay.
Barron, your aye?
For our aye.
Carl nay.
O'Connor aye.
Four one.
And, did you say yes? Okay, then I will leave it alone.
Okay, next order of business, public hearing, introduction to local law number seven of two thousand and twenty-two, the moratorium on land developer approvals. I need a motion to open the public hearing.
Carl will make the motion.
O'Connor, real second.
Call the question.
Barron, your aye?
For our aye.
Carl aye.
O'Connor aye.
Dwyer aye, so carried. The public hearing is open. There's a pretty good-sized audience. I, I don't know who would like to come up and speak. You're all welcome to come up. If that be the case, we'd ask that you contain your comments to a shorter period of time. I don't like time limits, but I like to respect everybody. Just come up to the mic, announce your name and the clerk, please.
Sorry, I went to the mask.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Neil Frischberg. I'm from, I'm an attorney at Fabricant Lippman in Frischberg and we represent the Monroe Temple of Liberal Judaism, who you may or may not know is selling their building on Route two oh eight and moving their temple to fifty-two Maple Avenue. The property is being donated by one of the temple members and it's their intention to replace what's now a dentist office with a new temple. Your proposal would affect, prohibit them from doing that in a number of ways. First, the proposal would prevent them from taking down the building and two, it would then prevent them from putting up a new building because it would no doubt require a planning board approval and, and ZBA approval and your moratorium prohibits the Monroe Temple from being an applicant in either one. It probably would leave, it could very well leave the congregants, some of which who are here and are your constituents, without a temple because they really need to sell, they really need to sell the temple and they have a buyer and we were in contract, actually, to sell the, sell the property, but there's a due diligence period and the buyer has already told us because of this moratorium, he wants to extend the due diligence periods because now the buyer is concerned that what he, that what the buyer wants to do with the temple is going to be prohibited. So it's, it's a domino effect and it's candidly a disaster for a lot of the people here who belong to Monroe Temple who would like a place to worship. Even the, you know, even the, even the, when I was looking at your local law, I, I recognize that you tried to put an exception into it, which, which is sort of like a use variance exception, but I think it's a, it's a little, it's, it's simply too restrictive. So I, I would make two suggestions. First, under section three, you could add as an exception religious organizations such as a church or a synagogue because I get the, I don't think this local law is being designed to prevent a dentist office being, being turned into a synagogue. I'm going to guess that you're concerned about too many houses going into smaller space, so to speak, or dense housing, or you would just want to, you would just want to look at your, your overall plan and to figure that out. But I don't think turning a dentist office into a synagogue is really part of, of what you're trying to do. So you could add under section three, I see you have nine exceptions, you could add exception ten, that religious organizations such as a church or a synagogue who are, who are putting up a, a new structure where an existing structure has already existed because you're already going to have an existing structure there. Second, and that would, that would resolve the Monroe Temple's problem, but now, but not completely because now I've got to worry about the purchaser of, of that property.
You represent the purchaser?
No, I only represent the temple.
Can we keep that comment then to that?
Well, I only say that because if we don't resolve the purchaser's problem, it affects the temple, so...
But I don't know to what extent that would be the case. We don't even know who that person is. We don't know what their application is. We don't know what their use is. We don't know anything about that.
Well, that's true and...
It is a public hearing, so he can speak.
Yeah, I, I'm just...
Yeah, yeah, okay, thank you.
All right, I'm, I'm sorry. I'll, I'll, I'm sorry if I'm using up too much time. I apologize.
No, 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 please.
I, I apologize. Just looking at your section four, if you look at your section four, it's, it's really restrictive. It says in order to prevent an unlawful taking and to prevent irreparable harm, the village board is authorized to grant limited relief from this moratorium pursuant to the standards requirements herein. I want to get into the standards. So the standards is one, clear and convincing evidence. I think you should change that to preponderance of the evidence. It's a bit less of a stan, it's less of a standard. I think you should get rid of including credible dollars and cents. This way, the applicant cannot make a reasonable use of its property without any of the uses permitted in the relevant zoning district. I, I think you should get rid of the moratorium causes irreparable injury to the applicant. This way, if an applicant comes before you, it can say, look, I bought this property, I want to do this, all I do is want to apply for a, a variance, some sort of area variance or something like that. It's going to cause me undue hardship. You'll say yes, you'll say no, but the standard that you have is, is, is too high, in my opinion. And just before I came here, I started looking through some cases regarding moratoriums and buildings and there are some cases that, you know, these moratoriums are considered changes in zoning and are some, and there are a whole bunch of takings cases that if you go too far, you wind up with the takings cases under nineteen eighty-three. So I think this, to a certain extent, prevents, or at least is a prophylactic, for lack of a better word, defense against that. And that would be, that would be helpful to you as well. And it would be helpful to your constituents.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Good evening, Mayor Dwyer, members of the board. My name is Daniel Richmond. I'm with the law firm Zaren and Steymetz, eighty-one Main Street, Suite four one five, White Plains, New York. I'm here on behalf of the evening of owners of private property within the village, including property located on two thirty-six, two thirty-eight, two forty, two fifty-two Elm Street and four twenty-four, four thirty and four thirty-four, New York Route two thousand and eight. Respectfully, our client strongly objects to the proposed local law, which would establish a broad and unjustified moratorium on land development approvals. It would be extreme error and an unjustified taking of private property for your board to adopt this law. As drafted respectfully, the proposed local law reads more as an invalid pretext to stifle all development in the village rather than as part of any good, of any good faith effort to preserve the status quo while the village legitimately addresses actual and specifically identified crises pertaining to its land use controls. At a minimum, the proposed local law should exclude land use applications that are already pending before the village, including any land use agency or department where developers in reliance on the village's existing land use controls have concrete and reasonable investment-backed expectations. The proposed local law provides no basis for the sweeping and untailored haul of virtually all development in the village that it contemplates and certainly does not purport to address any, quote, dire necessity or crisis condition that is reasonably calculated to alleviate. The state's highest court, the New York Court of Appeals in Bell Harbor Realty, thirty-five New York Second, five oh seven, unambiguously held that, quote, "A municipality may not invoke its police powers solely as a pretext to assuage strident community opposition, but instead, quote, 'In order to justify interference with the beneficial enjoyment of property, a municipality must establish, A, that it is acting in response to a dire necessity, B, that its action is reasonably calculated to alleviate or prevent the crisis condition, and C, that it is presently taking steps to rectify these problems.' As a result, subsequent to the Bell Harbor case, case law and moratoria have been amplified to establish that to be valid, moratoria must have, among other things, a valid public purpose. Here, the proposed local law proffers no good faith purpose for the contemplated moratorium. It asserts no crisis, no specific problem, nor even any real deal detail about what purportedly would be rectified while a moratorium were in place. Rather, the legislative purpose section of the proposed local law, section one, simply makes a conclusory and blanket assertion that the village is considering undefined changes to its comprehensive plan and land use regulations, quote, "to provide for controlled growth" and that the law's, quote, "purpose" is, quote, "to promote community planning values by regulating land development based on a, quote, carefully considered plan." Thus, while the proposed local law asserts that several planning issues affecting the village's growth should be addressed, it cannot and does not articulate any, quote, "dire necessity" or "crisis condition" as the Court of Appeals has clearly held is required. Respectfully, the vacuity of the proposed local law's a sensible legislative purpose is laid bare by its inconsistency with the scope of the contemplated moratorium. The proposed local law, for example, lists without any explanation a wide variety of, quote, "planning issues that should be addressed", ranging from senior citizen housing, preserving historic buildings and structures, updating use and bulk regulations, developing overlay districts, and developing regulations pertaining to village's historic district and architectural regulations. None of these issues, however, offer any basis for halting development for commercial uses such as our clients are pursuing, much less any dire necessity or crisis condition in this regard. Similarly, there's a clear disconnect between the stated purposes of the proposed local law and its scope. For example, while the proposed local law is purportedly intended to provide breathing room for the village to consider issues including preserving historic buildings and regulations pertaining to the village's historic district, the proposed local law would exempt applications for the reuse of historic buildings. As such, with all due respect, it appears that the reality is the proposed local law is a pretext to unjustifiably obstruct development and an abuse of the moratorium device. For the same reason, the proposed local law is unreasonable in its scope. Again, it contains no specificity as it is supposed basis for the moratorium and is overbroad in the type of projects it would halt, i.e. essentially all projects besides single-family homes. Moreover, the proposed local law offers no timeframe for the alleged changes to the village's comprehensive plan or changes to its land use regulations that it claims are required. Because of the apparent lack of any actual dire necessity or crisis for a moratorium, the proposed local law cannot explain what evaluation has to be done, what studies would occur, how long they would take, or even what these changes could possibly be. In addition, as set forth by the United States Supreme Court and Penn Central Transportation Company versus City of New York, four thirty-eight U.S. one oh four, the proposed local law is so broad as to entirely fail to consider the economic impact, quote, "the economic impact of the regulation on private property owners in the village and in particular, the extent to which the regulation would interfere with their distinct investment-backed expectations." Again, the proposed local law offers no basis for the crushing impact it would have on developers' reasonable investment-backed expectations when it does not articulate why their interests must be adversely impacted other than in the most generic fashion. At a minimum, the proposed local law and any future zoning changes should exclude land use applications that are, have already been submitted to any village land use agency or department. The village local law does not, the proposed local law does not explain why the village cannot study and analyze changes to its land use controls while projects move forward in the ordinary course. The reasonable investment-backed expectations is particularly strong for developers who are advancing plans that effectively comport with the village's existing land use controls and the proposed local law provides no valid basis for interfering with these interests. We appreciate your board's time and consideration. We're available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, board members. My name is Robert Stout with White Menos from Manhattan and Albany. My partner Charlie Gottlieb submitted electronic comments earlier today. I brought hard copies of those that I'll provide to the clerk at the end of my presentation. I'll be very brief. I'll summarize what's in that written material and I've also been going through, crossing out legal points that have already been ably made by counsel that appeared before me. We represent two oh eight Business Center LLC. They have a site plan application pending since November two thousand and eighteen before the planning board to construct approximate, an approximate forty-seven thousand five hundred square-foot commercial building with related off-street parking and infrastructure at four oh one and four oh three State Route two oh eight and twenty-three Gilbert Street. The proposal is to include approximately seventy-two thousand five hundred square feet of floor area devoted to commercial and retail uses. It's a permitted use in the village's general business zoning district. No variance relief is required. And to date, at the direction of the planning board, with the various reviews and studies that have been required, the applicant has expended approximately six hundred thousand dollars on the project review pursuant to the secret process. That work includes a draft environmental impact statement submitted to the planning board on or about April thirteenth of this year, which is expected to be reviewed at an upcoming planning board meeting. That DEIS is a comprehensive review of the project's potential environmental impacts and related mitigation to ensure that any potential environmental impacts for the project will be properly mitigated. The DEIS demonstrates that the project will not result in any of the perceived impacts that are the stated reason for the moratorium. With all due respect, as has been stated before, there is no rational basis for prohibiting the project under the moratorium other than an intent to purely target the project and/or the applicant. We understand that the planning board members reportedly have expressed opposition to the moratorium and noted that this project should be exempt due to the significant review process that has already been completed. Stopping the planning board's review now can only be viewed as a targeted attempt to block the project, notwithstanding that it is specifically permitted under the village's zoning code with site plan approval. As to the proposed local law itself, and again, with all due respect to the board members, the moratorium completely lacks a rational basis and is without any documented evidence that it is in response to an identified genuine crisis or emergency condition. Instead, considering that the ultra-orthodox Jewish community owns a substantial portion of the remaining vacant land in the village, we can only conclude the moratorium is an attempt to block the development applications from the ultra...
Excuse me. I'd like to ask a question about that statement.
Yes, sir.
Can you repeat that statement again?
Uh...
That one just about who owns the balance, the property?
My understanding is, is that the ultra-orthodox...
Your understanding?
Yes, sir.
From whom?
We can provide records for that, if you'd like, as a follow-up to our submission.
I don't think that has a place here.
Okay.
Do you want to submit it for the record?
Well, this is a, this is a public hearing.
I respect that.
We have a submission.
I respect it, but, but I don't want that in this village. That doesn't exist in this village. That rhetoric doesn't exist and I won't have it.
Okay, well, you can look at our submission. It speaks for itself and we'll submit supplements as, as necessary. We think this is a pattern of delay related to this project. This application was filed in two thousand and eighteen. It took approximately a year for the planning board to identify the secret type of the project. A POSDEC wasn't issued until two years in. We're three years into the project and we just have a draft environmental impact statement now that's ready to be considered. We filed a FOIL request to better understand the origins of the moratorium and the related comments from, from the planning board to get at the, the reason for the moratorium and to disabuse any notions that we might have that it's for some other reason. As such, we request that the planning board extend the public hearing or adjourn the public hearing until such time as that FOIL request has been received and we can examine the underlying reasons for the moratorium and deal with that issue head-on. Again, the applicant will suffer financial loss, a significant financial loss if it is unable to proceed with its project. It's well settled under New York law that a moratorium cannot be adopted in bad faith to only prohibit a specific project which would otherwise be permitted. As such, at minimum, the moratorium must specifically exempt the project to avoid any liability on behalf of the village. Exempting the project would not have any impact on a stated basis for the moratorium. I referenced DEIS earlier. That DEIS demonstrates that the project will not have any adverse impact on the village and will not exacerbate any of the stated concerns noted in the moratorium. As such, again, respectfully, there's no rational basis for the moratorium. We feel that the village board should withdraw the moratorium because it's contrary to law and if the zoning is amended to reduce or prohibit the project, the applicant will not be able to make the reasonable return on its investment that it expected to make. And unless the moratorium was withdrawn, we think the village should notify its insurance carrier of the circumstances surrounding the proposed legislation and any potential liability that may result. I thank you for your time and attention.
I have a question for you, sir, again, please.
Yes, sir.
Couple of things. You had mentioned early on, the size of the project was how many square feet? I thought I heard forty-seven five and then I heard seven...
Yeah, I think forty-seven five would be the footprint of the project. Yeah, I think 47,500 would be the footprint of the project, and then the total square footage, total floor area within the building is 72,500.
And then you mentioned that we talked about financial concerns and so forth, but I want to go back to something, just so we're clear-
Yes, sir.
-for everyone. You had said that the project, in its current iteration, has expended X amount of dollars.
Yes, sir.
And you say that this moratorium puts that off a nought.
It puts it at risk should the zoning be changed to imperil the project.
Should the zoning be changed?
Yes.
Should, should, not shall, but should. Okay. And the next thing you state was that, again, going back to this notion of a developer being of a certain faith creates this model. That's what you said.
Doesn't, it doesn't create the model. There's an absence of a rational basis based on the record that we've reviewed for the moratorium.
And based upon that, that's the conclusion you came to.
In the absence of that and the totality of the circumstances around this project, that is one potential conclusion that can be drawn.
What?
I look forward to be proven wrong.
This is a, this is a public hearing, so you're welcome to your opinion. You're welcome to put that on the record, but that's all it is. Thank you.
I completely understand and agree. Thank you.
Hi, how are you?
It's, I'm always honored to be here. I'm Rabbi Roger Lerner. I'm the rabbi for Monroe Temple Liberal Judaism on Main Street. You already heard our attorney speak, as well as other attorneys, and they addressed all issues with regards to laws, and I'm not here for that. I'm here because I, we have about 75% of the people here are from our temple that are behind me. They're here because we're concerned about the project that is in the process. We haven't yet filed because we're still waiting for certain things to happen. This moratorium, as our attorney had already shared with you, has the potential of, well, really ending everything that we're starting. And what we're trying to do, pretty much, is consolidate and save our temple. That's what we're doing. We have spent the last few years discussing where we would go. We've been on Main Street. We know we needed to sell because our numbers have been declining. That is the normal range of what's been going on. But we are members of this community, and it was decided we wanted to be in Monroe. And then we have a beautiful opportunity to transform a property that's here that is an old property. Sorry, Dr. Goldberg, but, you know, we couldn't redo the property to make it into something usable for a temple. We would have to take it down. That's one of the things we decided. Once again, this moratorium would cause a problem with that. The issue that we bring before you is that, you know, should this moratorium happen and it really send everything back to, well, to start over again, I can't promise that Monroe is where we're going to be. And I say that, it's not a threat. It's really just an actual fact, right? And all I'm saying is, you need us in this community. You need us here. And that's the showing that you have behind us. We want to be here, and we're doing everything we can in our process to make that happen. But if this moratorium happens, the likelihood of it stopping that entire process is, I would say, 90%, because we have a beautiful situation where we can now thrive for the future. But that, you know, it's not necessarily going to happen should we not be able to neither sell the building nor build, because both sides of it are imperative in order for that process to continue. We are, we are a thriving congregation, even though we are shrinking, but we want to continue. And we know that this opportunity that we have been working on for these last couple of years are what will enable our future for the next several decades. We can't guarantee religious institutions, but you can guarantee that things that we're putting in place are meant to ensure our future. And so that's what we're trying to do, and really, at this moment, this moratorium will, well, will scuttle that. And like I said, it's my community that's behind me. It's your community that's behind me, and we are, we contribute to Monroe every day because this is our home, and Monroe Temple is our home, wherever it eventually may end up being. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I came here to listen, but I'm going to speak. I'm not an attorney. I'm not even working anymore. I'm a retiree, but I've been a member of Monroe Temple for 46 years. It's my home. It's my second home. Our building, our congregation has been in Monroe for seven decades and in our current building for 67 years. And it was a big struggle to decide whether to stay here or move somewhere else. And our congregation decided that Monroe is where we want to stay. And as our rabbi alluded to and as our attorney alluded to, preventing us from selling our property prevents us from building in Monroe. It's as simple as that. And putting the moratorium puts handcuffs on the people who want to buy our property. We had, we had expanded the temple in, in 1985 to accommodate 450 congregants. You all know, you see it in your own places of worship. Fewer people are attending, and yet we have members who are there 50 years because this is where we want to be. We want to be in our congregation in Monroe. So I urge you to think carefully about this moratorium, and perhaps, if it's necessary, to put a time on it, that in six months, so that the people who are in the planning can say, okay, we can get our plans in by then and complete it. And what, what we're talking about is, as Rabbi alluded to, repurposing a property that would otherwise stand unused. Nobody is going to walk into that property and say, I can turn this temple office into a home. It's not going to happen. We can, we can tear it down and make it something that you will be proud of, and we will remain committed, wonderful community members. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm also a member of the Monroe Temple. My family's been in the community for 15 years now, 14 years now, and we've been members of the Monroe Temple for over 11 of those years. I feel that I represent somewhat of the younger families in our congregation, who most can't be here because they're taking their kids to their sports and their orchestra practices, and they're all community members dragging their kids in 12 directions. I'm lucky enough to be able to be here, and I feel that I represent the more than 60 kids who are part of our religious school that attend and who are getting bar and bat mitzvahed, who are doing community service and mitzvahs in our community. And I just want to say, we'd like to be here. We'd like to be able to move forward. We would like to be able to see a bright and shiny light by having a new home in a building that will serve our needs more efficiently and effectively in worshiping here and being a part of our community and making it a better place. So please consider changing this moratorium in a way that will not negatively affect our Jewish community.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
How are you? Thank you. I have a suggestion. Your Section 2A says that no development approval shall be considered during the moratorium period, six months or however it might be extended. It goes on to say that includes not even accepting an application. I'm not sure why you wouldn't accept an application for a SECREP review, site plan review, subdivision review, a ZBA review. You well know, I know, that SECREP can take at least six months. It could take a year and a half. It could take two years. Why freeze the process? If the applicants choose to proceed, you can still do your review of the comprehensive plan and allow the applicants, should they choose, to proceed with their applications. Nothing is lost. You can, you can allow it to proceed short of final approval, is what I'm saying. That would be my suggestion for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that.
I'm the current president of Monroe Temple, and you've heard from many of our members. I don't want to take up more of your time. I just want to underscore, not only do we really want to remain in Monroe, our existence, which Mr. Frisberg, I think you've either alluded or stated out loud, may cease to exist, period, if we're not able to go ahead. Timing is everything. I wish that we had already gotten plans in, but as, you know, everybody's working to get done to submit what's necessary. I'm really proud of our congregation, the showing. They show up when needed. We're doing food drives and, you know, we're walking and we're doing, we're good community members, right? We go beyond our walls, and I just really implore you to consider and make it, because the other thing, one of the really important point, we need Attorney General approval, New York State Attorney General approval, in order to sell our building. We need a home to go to in order to gain that approval. Without a home, we're done. So our fate is in your hands, and I implore you to consider that. Thank you.
Appreciate that.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the board.
Yes, sir.
Joe Haspel, I think most of you know me. I represent various developers in the village, including, I am also counsel for 208, but this is really not to be redundant to all the other lawyers, except to the extent that every lawyer has said that there's no apparent rational basis for this moratorium. Now, that leads me into my issue here. Maybe there is a rational basis. Maybe there isn't. The problem that we have here is there's been no transparency with how this particular local law got before us today. In New York has the open meetings law. New York has a strong commitment to transparent proceedings before governmental bodies, and that is articulated in the open meetings law. As set forth in Section 95, it is essential to the maintenance of the democratic society that the public business be performed in an open and public manner, and that citizens of the state be fully aware and able to observe the performance of public officials and attend and listen to the deliberations and decisions that go into the making of public policy. We got here because two weeks ago, there was a notice to put this on a public hearing. That is it. I spent half of the day today going through the minutes for the last year of village board meetings, and there is not one statement in the minutes referring to a need to change the comprehensive plan. There's not one word in the minutes suggesting there needs to be a moratorium. There is nothing, zero. So how did we get here today? The only possible way that we got here today is discussion amongst the members of the board suggesting that the council to the board create a document, which we're going to throw out at the last minute, not provide the public with the ability to evaluate why we got here. We don't know why we got here, other than what's set forth in a document that was never discussed in open before the members of the community, before it magically appeared two weeks ago. And the only thing that happened two weeks ago, there was no discussion then. The only discussion is, we have this document that appeared, set it down for a public hearing. There wasn't even a discussion then as to the need to address the change of a comprehensive plan. A five-year-old comprehensive plan. That's what we have here, a five-year-old comprehensive plan. That five-year-old comprehensive plan was created, was the first comprehensive plan after, I think, 40 years of the old plan. And to quote the appellate division, "The legislature intended to include more than the mere formal act of voting or the formal execution of an official document. Every step of the decision-making process, including the decision itself, is a necessary preliminary to formal action." We don't have that here. Formal acts have always been matters of public record, and the public has always been made aware of how its officials have voted on an issue. There would be no need for this law if this was all the legislature intended. Obviously, every thought, as well as everyone's official duties, is a matter of public concern. It is the entire decision-making process that the legislature intended to effect by the enactment of this statute, this statute being the public meetings law, the open meetings law. That's a quote from Orange County Publications Division of Ottawa Newspapers against the city council, the city of Newburgh, out of Orange County. Thus, the appellate division held that while clearly casual encounters by members of a public body do not fall under the open meeting law, even informal conferences or agenda sessions do. It permits the crystallization of secret decisions to a joint, to a point, just short of ceremonial acceptance. You can't enact a law unless the public sees every aspect. It did not happen here. With respect to the moratorium, without knowing the history of how and why the proposed legislation came into being, it is impossible for us lawyers to prepare and provide meaningful comment to address at this public hearing. We have been, our legs have been cut off. We couldn't prepare because the only thing we had is the document. There is nothing, no legislative history here. It was a creation of a document, set it down for a public hearing, ramrod the whole process through, go on. That's, that's, this is exactly the situation the open meetings law sought to avoid. The open meetings law is not dependent upon the name of the board chooses for a particular type of meeting, whether conference agenda, work session, or site visit. Where the public business is being conducted, the public has a right to attend. Again, that didn't happen here. Magically, a document appears without discussions, it's put down for a public hearing. That's it. And the same is, not only this moratorium, this local law, the same holds true for the underlying purpose. The underlying purpose is purportedly to create a new comprehensive plan, what I call a bogus comprehensive plan, because this, I've never heard of a comprehensive plan being changed five years after the fact. If you look at the name of the comprehensive plan, it's into the future, the 21st century. I forgot what it was, but it's exactly opposite of what this board is doing right now. I forgot what it was, but it's exactly opposite of what this board is doing right now. Another problem that I had here, and it's an indication that this board is ramrodting the situation through, is when I was here two weeks ago, there was a address of Mr., the person who was going to be brought on to assist in the creation of the comprehensive What was problematic to me, again, I went back a year and I saw nothing in the minutes which put the hiring of this professional out for a competitive bid. There was no RFP process in getting this person. That's problematic to me, but it's not only problematic to me because it's consistent with the manner that this is being done, it's problematic to me because it violates the local law of this village. The local law of this village requires that such retention of professional is done by the RFP process. It wasn't done here. Another indication that this is a ramrod attempt to stop the development, and without offense, Mayor Dwyer, without, to stop the development of primarily members of the Orthodox Jewish community, because that is what is happening. You may say it's not, but I know it is, and everybody in this room probably knows who it is.
That's your opinion, Mr. Haspel?
It's more than an opinion.
It's not more than an opinion?
It's more than an opinion.
And it's not true. And please keep your comments to the facts, sir. If you have comments about the law, that's fine. But that's what we're here for, and that's what you're here for.
Exactly.
So to accuse the board of something that isn't true, which you have no basis for, I think that that is just baiting this board. So please keep your comments to the facts, to the local law. If you have suggestions for changes to the local law for the moratorium, we're more than happy to listen to that. Otherwise, everything else you're saying about antisemitism has no place here.
This is not antisemitism.
Oh, it isn't? Isn't that what you just tried to say?
No, I said the Orthodox community from Kiria Stroh, okay? These people are part of the, there's no antisemitism, but there is anti-Sotmarism, and you can't say the words.
That's enough. If you want to put that on the record, you can do it.
Mr. Haspel, I'm asking you to address the board. You and council are going to finish your business. And we're not going to take any of your opinions. If you've got facts based on something that you can submit to the clerk, we'll take it. But this back and forth is not doing us any good.
I'm looking at the timing and the methodology that this particular board is going.
Let me talk about your methodology. There's a person in this room who served on that comprehensive committee in 2012. He's in this room right now.
Okay.
2012. They finished their work and adopted in 2014, February 2014.
It was enacted in 2017.
Zoning or a comprehensive plan?
The comprehensive plan was...
That they finished in 2014, completed.
If you look on the document, it says 2017. If you look at when...
What I'm suggesting to you, I got that. What I'm suggesting to you is that the work that was done on the comprehensive plan, title aside, that work is from 2012 and ending somewhere in 2014. That's eight years ago.
Okay.
Okay, so when you purport to say that it's a five-year-old document and that there shouldn't be any changes, and there shouldn't be this, and there shouldn't be that, I don't think you really believe that. I think you really believe that.
I know that that's what the document says. I know that's when the zoning wasn't acted. I know, I know, I know when it went to the Secretary of State. So Mayor, don't tell me what I know and what I don't know. I do know that.
The author of the comprehensive plan is the gentleman that's doing this document now.
The one that was hired without an RFP?
All right, that's enough of this. Let's just finish with your comments.
No, I mean, he's baiting me. I have to bait him back.
No, let's just...
Let's look at, this moratorium has been put in place, I hate to be personal here, but days or weeks after this board did not get a particular property that this mayor wanted, then it went to an Orthodox for development.
I don't know that.
You know that.
I don't know that.
Okay.
I don't know that.
Well, when and if this gets to litigation, we'll prove that, because I know it to be true.
Okay. I don't know that.
At this point in time...
Can we just put, can we just set aside all this, all these threatening comments and just finish what you have to say about the local law, which is the subject of this public hearing, please?
The local law is about the comprehensive plan. The comprehensive plan should not exist because there is no articulated need for that. There's no transparency. There is nada, nothing. We do not know. This whole board, council for the board, is acting in secret. We don't know. If this was done with transparency, to date, we do not know anything other than what is on those pieces of paper. There is nothing for somebody to be able to determine how it came. Magic. I snapped my fingers and a document appeared, set down for a public hearing. I think I've made my point, but that's the facts. There's violations of the open meetings law, there's violations of the RFP law, there's no transparency whatsoever, and this is affecting primarily one group of people. So you tell me what the compelling evidence is. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
Can I ask a follow-up? Can I ask a question? I just have two questions. They prompted me. I'm not, I promise, I won't be, I just ask the questions and you answer them. I'm just hearing the answers. He said that you, I was unaware, comprehensive plan 2012, over to 2014, whatever the years, it doesn't matter to me. So first question, and let me ask both of them and then give you the floor. Was there a moratorium in 2012? Don't answer right now. Second question, because you put two years for comprehensive plan, you would think that if you're, what, why are we doing it now? There would have been one then, so you have to say, well, there has to be something there. And what is the rationale? I'm curious, because it's been asked. People have been saying, no rationale. I don't know, so maybe share. And then regardless of how things turn out. Thank you.
Anyone else in the public, please?
You don't want to, but I was serious. Were you, did you, didn't want to answer?
I don't know about moratoriums in 2012. The comprehensive plan was adopted in February of 2014. I know the work was started in 2012, as I believe. This moratorium has a life of six months, and there are several exceptions. I would hope that everyone would read those exceptions before making accusations.
Your second question was, what is the rationale?
The rationale is contained in the premise to the local law, and the rationale is to update the comprehensive plan.
I appreciate that.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees. Steve Brown. So I'm a local real estate agent. I do a lot of business in the village of Monroe. I've brought several projects here over the years, Mavis Tires, Jake's Wayback Burgers, done a lot of business locally. I, I'm not in favor of this, of this moratorium at all, really. I think it's going to kill business, and I think it's going to create, obviously, some division. I'm not here to make those kind of comments tonight. I have a page from the comprehensive plan that I thought was interesting, that I'm just wondering if the current board has lived up to some of the things that were in that original comprehensive plan from 2014 or 17. On page 104, it talked about the purpose of the plan, that it was basically, there was a failure of the 1960 village plan, which obviously, plans get outdated, it was a long time ago. So it was suggested that in order to further this new comprehensive plan, that the village board assemble a five to 10-member comprehensive plan review committee that would be comprised of a village board member, a member of the planning board, a member of the zoning board, an appointed representative of the local chamber of commerce, or other business group, the village engineer, and other members that are chosen by the village board. So that group would then review the comprehensive plan, its implementation, identify which recommendations have been implemented, and prioritize those recommendations that have not yet been implemented. The committee should also make recommendations as to what issues may have arisen over the preceding year that may require a partial or comprehensive reexamination of the plan. So I think that was well-written, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and I don't see where a moratorium is required to adjust some things that need adjustment. There may very well be some very valid things that can be adjusted, but I don't see how a moratorium is going to help anybody. I think that it's negative for business, I think it's going to kill deals. Clearly, the deal with the temple seems to be in peril, and I know of several other deals, even ones that I'm working on in the village, that will probably be in peril also. So, you know, we would like to see the village thrive, and I think some consideration could be given. Maybe we reenact just that paragraph, maybe set up a board that can review things without going into moratorium and see where that takes us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am here behalf, here tonight on behalf of my clients, Mr. Isaac Weider and 445 Route 17M Holdings LLC. Both of my clients are property owners in the village. They currently have projects before the planning board for office buildings. They've put a lot of time and money into these projects, and both projects would be placed in jeopardy by the moratorium. We have some objections that mostly echo the sentiments already heard tonight, so I'll just summarize briefly. We feel that a moratorium is unnecessary because, as discussed, the comprehensive plan and the zoning were recently overhauled, be it 2017, 2014, within the last 10 years. We feel that the moratorium is overbroad and that it purports to focus on things like housing, senior housing, but encompasses all development. We feel that it will hinder economic development within the village, and at the very least, we feel that if the moratorium is to go ahead, that some of the exceptions should be, some of the restrictions should be eased. Currently, there are exceptions, but they're very difficult to satisfy. They're like obtaining a use variance in that a property owner would have to show there's no reasonable use of the property, which if you've dealt with development before, that's almost impossible to show. And we feel that there should also be an exception for any applicant that has already submitted an application to the planning board.
Is your applicant 445?
Route 17M.
And that's next to where?
That is...
I want you to say it. No, you say it, please.
Near Fitzgerald Court. And Mr. Isaac Weider's property is near Maple Lane, Maple Avenue. So with that in mind, we would urge the board not to adopt the moratorium, and if they do, we would encourage them to maybe rethink some of the exceptions and ease restrictions on property owners. I have some letters I'll leave for the board that I'll leave with the clerk.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anyone else in the public? Okay. At this time...
Do you want to continue the public hearing? So you'll adjourn it until the next meeting?
Okay, so I need a motion to adjourn and continue the public hearing on the moratorium.
Barringer will make the motion.
Second?
Carl will second.
Call the question?
Barringer, aye.
Ra, ra, aye.
Carl, aye.
O'Connor, aye.
Ra, ra, aye, so carried. Thank you. And thank you, everyone, for their participation. It's greatly appreciated.
Thank you.
We just take a minute before we begin our regular scheduled meeting?